Okay, we are up. Okay, being five o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Breeden.
Here.
Councilmember Mauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Here.
Mayor Portem Sanders.
Here.
All present.
Oh, I was thinking, you must have slid in. Wow. Okay, approval of the agenda, motion?
So moved.
Second. I'd like to recommend one change on the agenda for the closed session item. There's a undisclosed litigation item that was put in there inadvertently. So if you're going to approve it, approve it without that item.
Okay. So we can amend that and still move the motion with that.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Sanders.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to read something before public comment and then our attorney has a comment to make. Persons wishing to address the council on matters in closed session may do so at this time. Speakers are limited to five minutes in a closed session. Comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Mr. Lemieux?
Yeah, I asked the mayor to make a little presentation before we get to closed session on this in the hopes that it can perhaps speed things along a little bit. I want to make it clear that the Brown Act allows the city council to discuss and/or purchase property in closed session and then, provided we announce it afterwards. But the council has directed that that's not what they're going to do, that if they take action on the property, that that will happen in public as a public item with full opportunity for people to comment on it. So bear that in mind. In other words, this is not, would not be your last shot at making a comment on this topic.
Okay, the closed session, I'll read it all to you and then we will ask for your public comment or, and so you can see it, you've got the agenda. Those who would like to make comments on the, on public comment, please do so at this
Dave Matthews, address is on file. I passed out essentially what I wanted to, information I wanted to pass on to you before you went into closed session about the first item, the 12 parcel land sale. Basically, oh, by the way, why is there a five-minute limit on this? This is an item on the agenda. You don't limit the other discussion on items on the regular agenda to five minutes. So that's a question I'm asking.
That was what we decided so we could get done through this with still not making you all wait after closed session.
Bear in mind that this is, we have to do this by special meeting tonight. We have a regular meeting starting at six o'clock and try to make that time.
I understand, I understand. I wait around, I've seen councils postpone the rest of the closed session to the end of the meeting too. Anyway, the parcels in consideration, I understand you're not going to take any action until it's in the public, but the things that I want you to consider is that several times Mr. Parsons during the town hall meetings has mentioned that there is a private entity involved with a 50% interest in this transaction. It turns out that basically that private entity is a trust, I believe, in the name of Joanne Clark. That is the sole, as far as I can tell, person involved. Joanne Clark is the wife of former councilman and former mayor Dan Clark. The chairman of the tribe and the developer have also said that they have talked to Mr. Clark during meetings on the base with the travels, in discussing the tribal's access to the base. That to me stinks from the beginning, and I don't know why anybody else has not mentioned this. I, I want at least this postponed or held until those facts become clear. I don't know how that private entity got that interest in those parcels. Are they one broadband 50% across all the lots? Are they specific lots? And why is the city acting as an agent for a private entity? I don't think it's legal. The other thing is that I have been against this casino from the day one, and that is entered into my decisions all along. However, the, at the end of the last meeting, Mayor Breeden mentioned that she would like to see the city look into purchasing property down on 395 and moving the casino down there. Now, that is a proposition I might be able to be persuaded to back because there are other things that could come out of that, that action. So I am very serious about looking into that, and I don't know why we, it's not even on the agenda tonight. Thirdly, or I don't know, I'm lost track here. My, I have tried to contact Kern County Grand Jury to get a stay on this transaction until these things have been cleared up. I have not received, as far as I know, a reply as yet, even to their hotline. So that speaks a heck of a lot about a hotline, but then what else works in the government? So those are my thoughts right now, and we'll wait and see what happens.
Can I speak on one?
I'd like to speak quickly about the private party issue. The, what you're describing potentially would be a conflict of interest under Government Code 1090. If a 1090 conflict of interest occurred, then as city attorney, I would have to recommend against that transaction. So understand that that kind of analysis is, would be part of what we would be doing to analyze that transaction, assuming we were going to proceed with it. So I, I understand what you're saying. There's a certain legal definition for whether or not it's a lawful transaction, whether or not it's a legal conflict of interest, and we're aware of, assuming that the facts you've described are correct, that we're aware of the, that issue, and it's something that we would take seriously.
Okay, next, please.
My name is Ricky Fielding. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, now that you've approved the MSA and with the sale of land to the Timbasa, to the tribe coming before the council soon, your attention should turn first to understanding the potential and likely effects of community-based, of a community-based casino, and then to protecting the community from the negative effects of the casino. I opposed your adoption of the municipal services agreement with the tribe, and I stand today to oppose the sale of the land. I've prepared an economic analysis that clarifies and corrects earlier analysis that was presented to the, to the council. I ask you to place that presentation on the agenda of your next council meeting so that you can have that information. In short, the earlier analysis overestimated several of the indirect benefits from the casino and neglected almost all of the local economic costs. My own analysis projects potential indirect benefits of six to ten million dollars at a cost of nearly 14.5 million dollars annually to the existing elements in the local economy. As negotiations with the tribe proceed, you need this and more detailed information in order to make the best decisions and to protect the community. In my own communications with you, I've identified significant research showing that while Native American gaming can be beneficial to city or to state coffers, such gaming is rarely a beneficial addition to a small community unless they can draw most of their traffic from outside of the local community. The developer's own presentation makes it clear that they intend to rely on city residents and the city's existing traveler base to supply the majority of casino traffic and likely the majority of their revenue. As you consider the land sale, you should consider that any distance from the city will reduce casual participation from city residents and travelers and will therefore reduce economic costs associated with the casino, while still allowing for many of the economic benefits from those who would work at the casino but likely still be living in town. I'd urge you to consider this and consider placing my presentation on the agenda for your next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Scott Leahy. I'm here to address you regarding the consideration of this land for sale. I'm now aware that our friends at the Timbasa tribe and the developer have evaluated a few other properties here in town. I believe you've been notified that they have offered to look elsewhere. Before you undertake that, I urge you to consider the, the additional 2.25 million dollars that will come to the city if we place it at the north end of China Lake. I'm not saying that the other places that have been proposed are, are unsuited and they may well be okay, but we have had discussion in this town about, well, it's an industrial park. It's not an industrial park anymore. The RDAs were dissolved. The, all of that land could have been forced to sale by the state at auction for basically anything. Now, it's possible that we could have gotten it on zoning, but the last serious offer that I heard for that land was to park trailers on it, okay? Park trailers on it. Now granted, that would get us a couple of jobs. This use, there's a concept in real estate that's just basically that you go for the best use. At the north end of China Lake Boulevard, we have a movie theater, we have a coffee shop, we have hotels adjoining or very near the property. It's possible that our city plan that we had and formulated 20 years ago or 25 years ago is perhaps not economically viable. However, we have the possibility of selling this land for 5.5 million dollars, two and a quarter would come to us. That could go a long way to helping the city build a cushion in our reserves to help manage future economic catastrophes which are almost certain to occur. I ask you to not only consider the indignant speech of people who already have jobs, they have jobs. These are people that are well-employed out on the base. They, they are doing well, and I would like you to consider for a minute the young person that may be able to take a job in casino operations or in technical electronics or in hospitality at this new casino and possibly be able to stay here as opposed to having to move off in order to live. This, I think that really what the city should do is honor the spirit of this agreement that we have, we have entered into with the Timbasa. They will be good neighbors. I have great amounts of experience. I grew up around the Navajo Reservation. I have great deals of experience dealing with Native Americans, Native American business, and it's solid. It's not going to hurt us. So I urge you to please proceed with this sale. It's not going to hurt our town. Our, once it's built, it's a nice casino, that's it. The base is still there. It doesn't harm the base, and if it did harm the base, I would urge you not to do it. The base is number one. However, I ask you to please approve this land sale. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Slaton, and my address is 522 Peg. I just wanted to share why I support the land sale specifically at this location. There are really two reasons for that. The first one is professionally. I don't talk about this a lot, but I do have a master's degree in economics from UC Davis. My concentration was in economic growth, and I also took the coursework for community development. My specialty and what I actually do for a living is I work in community-based economic development programs to help promote communities and help them to grow, and I do that in the Central Valley. I'm married into Ridgecrest, but my heart is still a little bit in the Central Valley. So I do that on a day-to-day basis, and we know a lot of things about tourism and how tourism works to help small communities. And we know some specific things, one of which is if tourists don't come into your town, they won't come into your town. If you put your attraction outside of the town, they will go and they will keep on driving by. But if they come into your town, you have between a 40 and 60% chance of getting them to come back and visit your other businesses. The other thing is, once you get tourists into your town, the ball is in your court. That is when it really is up to a town to win or lose that opportunity. If businesses are smart, if they work together, if they work with attractions, they can make things like this real engines for their community. And the best part of tourism is that those dollars are such high-service dollars. They benefit people, no offense, but in Ridgecrest, we have a lot of good jobs, jobs other people want, but we don't have a lot of jobs for people who want to go into service sectors, who are trying to get entry level, who want blue-collar jobs, and they benefit those people. And the best part of those jobs is that dollar-for-dollar, your return on investment in those levels of jobs have a higher impact in your local community. If you give $100 of a raise to somebody who is an engineer on base, they're going to travel, they're going to put it in their 401K, they're going to buy a nice car. If you give it to a mom or dad who's working at a minimum wage job or slightly above, they're going to buy clothes for their kids, they're going to go out to eat that night, and they're going to drive the engine of your local economy. So professionally, I feel like putting the, putting the tribal casino next to the base is the best opportunity. We're getting people to drive through town either way, reading into our town. It's our chance to capture those dollars, give people jobs, and really make it an economic driver. The second reason is personally, as I mentioned, I'm from the Central Valley, and I spend most of my time in the Central Valley. I actually worked in a community called Goshen throughout a number of communities in Tulare County, and we were very close to both Eagle Mountain in Porterville and the Tachi Palace in Lemoore, and we had senior programs in all of our communities, which I really miss because I get to go on the bus with the seniors to the casinos and all the time. They would beg for the casino trip. They'd spend $20. Honestly, Nigel, I don't know how they made money at that because they eat the free buffet and they drink all the drinks, not alcoholic drinks, and they spend maybe $10 or $20, but they have a fantastic time, and they all go on the bus, and I don't gamble, so I'd spend my time talking to people. We're out in the community wandering around. And the things I saw from when the casinos were there and the things I heard from residents are the things I want for Ridgecrest. They talked about how they were huge at giving back to the community. They talked about how they were really thoughtful partners in terms of economic development, and they try and grow together. They talked about how it was this attractive, nice place where people wanted to come and it improved their impression of the community. It's all things we think about. So if we put a nice casino, you could easily drop Eagle Mountain, Chancier, Tachi right by the base, and it would, it would be incredibly attractive. In fact, I don't know if any of you have driven down 178 before, but I have friends who've come in and they drive in and they're like a wrecking yard, a sneak-a-peek, where am I? You put a nice building next to the gate, the only thing it can do is make this community look better and more attractive, bring in tourists, bring in people who think it's a better community, and frankly, give something for our visitors to do, not just to be here for the minute that they're here, but to stay an extra, extra day and spend an extra dollar while they're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, council, and good evening, everybody. In the city of Ridgecrest, I'd like to thank this young lady here for stealing my thunder. I think she was very eloquent in what she said, and I want to reiterate, it's a good project, it's in a good location. What was on the board many months ago while we went through this very long and arduous discussion where I think everybody in the city of Ridgecrest was given ample opportunity to comment. From the developer's perspective, I think the, let's say the naysayers are in the minority. I think this economic development project has certainly has the vast majority of support from the city of Ridgecrest. The Economic Green Crew over here, I call them, and thank you for your support over the last few months, have, what, 2,700, say, close to 3,000 members. I think that's about, what, 50% of the voting population or the people that vote? If I'm wrong, pump my numbers up, please.
We have, we have 2,350 members and we have X number of voters. I know 4,000 votes might get you a seat on council.
So I, I don't want to really take up a lot of everybody's time. I mean, I, I think we've all had a very good amount of public time to voice our opinion. You've seen my presentation. I remember standing on my feet over there for four and a half hours praying every minute that it would stop and everybody could go home. I, I guess, you know, from a pure business developer's perspective, I personally, along with staff from the city of Ridgecrest, spent a large amount of time looking at sites initially. And we went sort of all over town. I think initially there were 14 sites that we looked at. And at the end of the day, from an economic perspective, in basically what's an industrial part of town, and people that are going south to north or north to south that we pull off either in consultation with the city, you know, marketing the place a little bit better than maybe we do or should, other businesses, and this is a key part of the casino, other businesses are gain a benefit from people coming in there. If we go to 395 South, the casino will do great, and not a single other person is going to be driving down past Walmart, in my opinion, or certainly to the north end of town. So that's the reason we sort of, I think, came together on the north part of town. So I, I guess in, in my final summation, and as much as I sort of enjoy being here, I hope we don't have to be here again flogging the same stuff to death. So I'm here to ask the city council to approve the land, our preferences to land by the base. After much internal discussion, the tribe said if the base, for whatever reason, is a really bad space, we'll look at a couple of other spots. So that opportunity or that option is out there. I think council's aware that sort of time is of the essence on this transaction. I've always pushed to get it done. I certainly don't want to be known as the casino Walmart guy of, of Northern California and Central California. You know, when we do a project, we do it and we roll up our sleeves and get it done. We don't dilly-dally for years at a time. So that's it. I ask you please, at your earliest convenience, to approve a site. We've got an MSA that signed, we're just missing one little piece. Let's get that piece done. Let's get it done soon. Let's roll up our sleeves, work together, and make the city economically self-sufficient again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hello, Lindsey Stevens. I just wanted to keep it brief and just remind you of the over 800 signatures that I gathered in a relatively short time in opposition of the casino being located within two miles of homeschools and churches, and would just ask that you strongly consider that these people really don't want to see this location. And some of them actually would prefer it to not be located here at all, but definitely the two miles within homeschools or churches, they are strongly opposed to that. And again, I just thank you for taking your time to consider this agreement, and I would ask also that we would review the MSA again to kind of get some of the holes in there fixed. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tom Witnick, address on file. I would just like to bring up the prospect of the fact that this is a business operation and, or a proposed business operation, and that I know two of you up there are business people, and when you go to the city or to the county, wherever you go to, for a permit to get something done and get it going, you usually like to get an answer pretty quick. Now, that doesn't mean you don't do due diligence to make sure and do all the research that things need to be done, okay? But we're, I think we're at a point now where the, the public is not privy to what you've been discussing in executive session, and that's the way it is. However, the public has seen this item on the agenda for months, many months. How long does it take to negotiate a land deal? And please don't take that in a criticism, take it in this context. I think it's time to make a decision, not to push it off to the November elections or after the November elections. The time is now. They deserve an answer. Even if you vote against them, they deserve an answer. If you will form, obviously, I support voting for this project, but I think they deserve an answer, and not to be put off until after November elections. The idea of taking annexing down onto 395, in concept, it sounds like a good future idea. My concern there is, and I haven't heard anybody mention this yet, but I know people have thought of it, but it's not been said publicly. If you annex 39, South China Lake Boulevard to 395, we then will have to maintain that road. Another three miles of heavy traffic-controlled roadway to maintain, which will not be cheap. To annex in, I served on LAFCO the last time I was on the city council, and it takes a long time to get an annexation done and through the system. That is well beyond what this business is asking as far as the timeframe. Previous people mentioned about just the fact of having it out there would not bring people into Ridgecrest very much. We would get the Brett Dobbs from it mostly, but as far as additional tourist traffic within the city would not, likely not happen the way we would if it's in here. Then my final comment has to do with the base. A lot of people have voiced comments that this is not fitting or does not match the base. I'm retired from the base, and my heart and soul is out there. I care about that base just as much as anybody. The first thing I would have to ask, and I'm sure you all know this answer, but maybe the public doesn't know it, the only comment, the base, I have heard is that they have mentioned that if they build the hotel, then they need to consider that as far as noise because of the flight pattern. I have not heard that the base has opposed this location. I have not heard that the base has said this is not fitting or matching our mission as the leader in weapons development. As somebody that knows what it means and knows what it is sometimes to struggle through a business environment, when things are good, when things are bad, it is time now to move forward. I think you should be close enough that this agreement that you get should be presented to the people here pretty soon, and I do appreciate the fact that you will bring it out for public comment because there's so much more that I could add to this. But it's so important, and somebody said before me, new people, so many parents raise kids here and they leave because there's no job. Now, if they leave to go to school, it's one thing, but having something they can do for the ones that don't want to go to college, it's another thing. So this is all things to consider, and there's so many more. There's so many pros and cons to this project and the location. All I know is it's time. We need an answer. Thank you.
Okay, we did say 30 minutes, and we gave each one of you five minutes, so it is now 5:29. Do you have any idea how much time you're going to need or be able to say new things? We're not trying to limit you from saying anything, but if it's all We're not trying to limit you from saying anything, but if it's already been said, please consider limiting to what you have to say. I don't want to cut anybody off. So, please, thank you.
It shouldn't take very long. Sean King, address on record. When a lot of these discussions began in April, there was also some gentlemen, I believe there were two, from Texas, from the economic consultants, that were saying that they would survey this town as well as five others to determine ways that Ridgecrest could perhaps grow and find new ventures. Then, at the vote of the 3-2 MSA, I believe it was Beth Summers, as part of a committee under that economic development group, mentioned, she said, "I am not personally for or against the casino." And while it's obvious where some of us stand, that was not her position, but her position in regards to the land was not here. So, I just want to bring that up as a, if the casino goes forward, this professional outfit and the committee that studied under and with this professional outfit said, this is not the place for it.
Let me make one correction. Beth Summers was acting on behalf of the economic development committees that existed in the city. The group that Beth and her committees worked with has not, they are just compiling all their information now. So, the professional group has not taken a stand one way or the other.
And yes, I completely agree with that. But just because I knew, from my understanding is that they were working somewhat with, the initial take that they had on it was, if you do the casino, don't put it here. Put it out.
That was Beth's, uh-huh?
Yeah.
Okay, that was Beth's recommendation, not the committee's nor that professional group.
I thought it was from the committee. If it's from her personally...
That was from her personally. She even made that clear.
Those people in that environment, so anyway.
Thank you.
I didn't tell us you're wrong, but the point just being, from that perspective, somewhere else. So, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mrs. Ferris.
Pat Ferris, 832 Elaine Street. A couple of questions, and I'll be brief. With the concern that we have and the dire straits that we seem to be purporting about our water, our critical overdraft, do we have any idea how much water would be used by the casino? And the MSA, I believe, that they said they might hook into the local water district. And I have a question. Would it be a problem when they build? Because I understand that the building code requires that any entity hook up to the local water system if there is a server. So, would there be a concern that if that's not true, that they would be able to dig as many wells as they chose? And would that be a concern about water? And the county just recently required that one of our pistachio growers pull up 82 trees because of the impact it was going to have on the water basin. I wonder if we're kind of weighing things here reasonably and fairly.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, please, just a short period of time. We're going past what the time allowed was.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Just had something that popped in my mind. As someone who was initially against the idea of the casino...
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, Joshua Neild, I'm sorry about that. I'm just trying to speed through. Someone who was initially against the casino when I heard about it until I did more information or did more research and gathered more information. It's very interesting, the information you can gather when you have a preordained agenda, meaning being against the casino or being for the casino, it turns you very blind to the opposition's view. And I appreciate everyone's comments. I understand everyone's side. But it made far too much sense for this casino to be located in the proposed location than not. And in my opinion, the good far outweighs the bad for our city to grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Okay, thank you all. With that, we will go into closed session, and we will return at 6 o'clock. Hopefully, give us a few minutes, because we didn't realize it was going to be that long.
We'll wait just one minute for Jim.
I'm sorry, I was speaking with a... We'll wait one minute for Jim. He's indisposed, that's the word. Do you want me to sing a song? I can do that.
Yes.
Okay, is it anybody's birthday? No.
Apparently, this guy back here.
Okay, we're all... What is your name?
Barry.
Barry? I can't, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see who you are. Does there anybody want to join me after I open my big mouth?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Barry. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Okay, Jim, you better get back here real quick, or we'll have to go in the second verse. Okay, well, let's do, we'll do the flag salute and the prayer. Jim will have to join us. Would, Laura, would you lead us in the flag salute? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Tellus?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We do have Reverend Reese Holt is going to lead us in our invocation tonight, and we thank God.
Let us all bow and pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you this evening for this council meeting. Lord, we thank you for the members of this city, the residents of Ridgecrest, Lord. We thank you that you have given us the strength to be here tonight, Lord, in spite of all the odds that are set up against anything that would prosper in this world, Lord. We thank you that you have given us the strength, the grace, and the mercy to be able to be here in this meeting today. Lord, we pray today that we would have wisdom, Lord, not only to do the things that we want to do, but do the things that we know to do. We pray that we have understanding so that the things that we choose to do, that we would go about them knowing what we are doing. We pray for peace in this city, Lord, regardless of our religious beliefs, our sexual orientations, whatever issues that may divide us socially, Lord. We pray that we would have peace and that we would learn to work together in spite of our differences. We pray for grace tonight, that we would have grace to look at each other and forgive, Lord, look at each other, and with the basis of integrity and wisdom and knowledge and understanding, Lord, that as we approach the things that are concerning this city, that we would do it productively, that we can move forward, and that we can also continue in the great things that have been done in this city thus far. We thank you for all these things, and we ask your blessing upon this city and upon this council. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. The next item, the next item is the city attorney's report in closed session.
Yes. The city council met in closed session to discuss two potential litigation items. One is identified as Southern California Edison. The other is identified as the County of Kern. In both cases, the city council received a report from the city attorney regarding those potential matters, and there was no reportable action taken. However, the city council also met in closed session to discuss real property negotiation for certain property listed on the agenda. That's property associated with, potentially associated with a sale to the tribe for a casino. The city council directed me to tell you that no action was taken. However, this item will be placed on an agenda shortly. It will either be at a special meeting before the end of the month or at the next regular meeting, pending review by the city attorney on the appropriate date. I also was asked to let you know that the city council did receive public comment on that subject prior to the closed session item. And she asked me, the mayor asked me to remind you all that the public comment, which we're about to do, is supposed to be reserved for items not on the agenda. So, if your intent is to come here and talk about that potential land sale, I'm not going to tell you how to use your three minutes, but understand that that will be the subject of a public meeting very shortly.
We did announce that we were not going to make a decision tonight before we went in, so that's why we wanted you to know. It is on the agenda, one item, and it will be voted on the next agenda, up and down, either on the 31st. And if we can't get everything done by the 31st, it will be in the next council meeting. There will be a vote. We're not going to put it off. Okay.
A vote in public, right?
A vote in public, out here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I thought I made that clear. If I didn't, my apologies to all of you. Okay, public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Please, sir. Mr. Porter, can I say something to you first?
Sure.
I owe you a huge apology. Last time, when you were, we were discussing something, I said something totally inappropriate. I said, "Shame on you." Shame on me for saying shame on you.
I'm not that thin-skinned, but yes, thank you.
I am. I don't like doing that. You got to me, and I'm sorry. My apologies to everybody, and especially to you.
Well, I understood it because, and I'm going to, my comments because you missed something I'd said earlier, and I understood your feelings, so it's okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
We're both adults. We can all make an error and be good about it.
Okay, thank you.
Name is Ronald Porter. Basically, the only thing I want to say, and that is, in my opinion, and you need to look at this, to have this negotiation regarding this property for sale in closed session, in my mind, it's a violation of the Brown Act. It has no security reasons. When you're buying property, it does, because you have to hold your negotiation parts in, because you don't want to give away your hand. In this case, you're selling it, and in my mind, under the Brown Act, it's a violation because you really want the most competition for those particular lots and the most dollars for the city. So, it's inappropriate that those be discussed in closed session, in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And each of you who may not be used to identifying yourself, as you can see, Mrs. Ford is not with us tonight, and Rachel, I'm sorry, and Rika, I may not know all your voices, so please, please identify yourself. Thank you.
Stan Rettora, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have three quick items. First one is, the last meeting we had, I asked for the cost for doing the road paving on California, and I haven't received that, so I would appreciate if somebody would send that information. There was an issue, it's the wastewater fund paving California. It was embedded in a total big dollar amount, and I'd like to see what the actual dollar amount is. If you could send that to me, please. Second item is, I've mentioned two or three times that I thought the Navy was not paying their share of the water fund revenue, and it, city manager said that the city would be doing a study. I guess I'd just like to remind the council that based upon my calculations, it's, you know, in the order of $100,000 a month. So, as months go by, it could be as much as $100,000 a month. So, the sooner we can get that study done, the better off we're going to be.
Thank you.
Item three is, the question, actually, is, I'd like to know when the finance committee became an ad hoc committee. I got an agenda through the email announcing the finance committee meeting, and it says it's an ad hoc committee. The committee was approved on May 18th by this board, council, and very clearly was not an ad hoc committee. It was basically a subcommittee of a standing committee. It was supposed to meet every month. So, something that's a standing committee, by definition, can't be an ad hoc committee. And I think, I'd like to have the city have a discussion on what they really think the finance committee is supposed to do, because if they're just going to go behind closed doors and have another closed session, it does the public no good. The whole idea, I supported what was presented on May 18th because it was going to be open to the public, and it was going to give transparency to the budget, and if the intention is to be an ad hoc. And of course, that wasn't the, that was not the original intention. It was passed as a standing committee. So, I would like the council to affirm exactly what the intent of the council is with regard to that finance committee. At some future date, put it on the agenda or whatever.
Certainly.
Okay. Stan, because I'm on that committee, it is supposed to be a subcommittee of the city org. That is correct, not an ad hoc. Number two, on direction of council, because we were talking about a specific person, that is the only reason that we were told to go into a closed session. Otherwise, no, it's not going to be a closed session, because the whole point of the committee is to go through the budget and discuss the finances. But when you're dealing with a specific personnel and person issue, that's the only reason. And we did that because that's what we were told to do on vice of council.
My understanding was that the mayor put the item on the agenda. It was supposed to be a discussion of roles and positions and not a discussion about an individual, so...
Which is why it's on tonight's agenda in open session.
Okay. Thank you.
For future reference, though, closed sessions have to be agendized, I mean, in proper advance notice.
I didn't ask for it to be on a closed session. I didn't know it was going to be. I simply asked for the discussion of the positions, not necessarily the quality of work or the people who occupy that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Martin, and I've been a citizen of this great town for 34 years, a white public health nurse for 32 years. So, we've been around the block here and love the town that we live in. Couple of concerns that I had brought up at one of the meetings before. I'd like to start off, buy a little time with a question. Anytime there's a major issue, I think it's good that maybe you talk to all the friends and neighbors right around the area, whatever the problem is, find out what their experience, what they saw, what happened. I'm curious, did any of the council members actually talk or survey or phone call or personal interview any of the city council members all around us, representing the areas of Bishop and Lamore and Rosemont and Porterville, the folks where we've had casinos, to find out directly from them? Maybe there's four per council, so there's maybe 30, 40 people. Survey them and ask them, has this worked in their community? How much money has come into the coffers? What problems have they had? Maybe five or six basic questions. Could I pose that question, if anybody has something to share with that?
I, go ahead. Okay, all right, go ahead first.
I mean, I know that several of us did, and so did our police department. That's how our MSA was crafted, and we covered and are able to mitigate for things that other cities wish they would have done in hindsight. So, we've been able to use that information to craft ours, so yes.
Well, do we know how many, though, that actually were surveyed or whatever? Do we have definitive numbers on how many councilmen weighed in? What I would like to offer to do is, as a volunteer concerned citizen, I do research on several hundred-page documents as a matter of my daily course. I'd like to volunteer to be a good citizen effort, to do a little survey with the council members from the six or eight casinos right around us, ask them five or six mainframe simple question, how has this worked for you and your communities? simple question, how has this worked for you and your communities? I'd like to volunteer that. The second thing I'd like to volunteer is this, we have a lot of data out there, but from multiple places and multiple sites and individuals working long and hard, but that data seems to be not available to the general public. We only have two sites right now dealing with the casino issue, a pro and a con, and one is a secret site, and the other site is a closed site, so neither one are available to the general public. And I would like to offer up a website where I can post all of the data, pros and cons, for the general public to get to, so they can see in a nice, easy-to-read fashion. I have an article here called High and Dry about the Corona Casino in San Diego, where literally running the town dry. They built a golf course, a 400-room casino, and the residents could not even get water from their own wells, and they had to buy the property back, sell it to the casinos for pennies on a dollar. Stories like this, I think, need to be brought to the attention of the general public, and I'm going to put them on a public site, not a closed site, and not a secret site, that everybody can get to, the general public. And I'll post it, I'll pay an ad on the swap sheet, so everybody can have the address, so the general public can get to the full and precise data on the pros and cons of this casino thing. Thank you very much.
There is no closed site, nor is there a secret site.
All right, well, let me explain. I just talked to Lindsey. Lindsey, you can help back me up. Lindsey has done a magnificent job. I'm going to toot her horn right now. She has 800 to 1,000 signatures, is standing in the hot sun, mall after mall after mall, but fighting for something she believes in. She got so many threats and so many nasty comments and so many people causing a stink that she had to make her site a closed, a secret Facebook site, only by invitation, only to keep the nastiness out, and I think that's preposterous, and it is against our democratic principle. People should be able to talk. The pro casino, wait, Peggy, the pro casino folks, I understand from Lindsey, Lindsey, help me, I just asked her because I was curious. The pro casino site is closed as well. I think it's not secret, but it's closed because they have, let's invite just who we want to attend. I want to put up a site that anybody can go to at any time, and I'll have it up in two weeks.
Sir, that was not our site. We had neither, anything to do with either one of those sites.
I understand that. No, I totally understand that, Peggy. The point I'm making is that the general public needs hard-hitting, specific data that they can get to on a public site, and we don't have it. And I plan to make that available in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Okay, the next item is council announcements.
Just be aware, if you go up Isabella Way, because we do have another fire going on up there, up the 155 over Alta Sierra Glenview, as well as the fires that have closed down by Cajon Pass and stuff, so just say a prayer for our firefighters and just be mindful when you're out and about.
I have, I have no comments at this time.
Okay, one thing that came to me is about the monies and the items that went to the Erskine Fire. $51,000 went, 28 trailer loads of items went, one semi-load went, and so many pickup truck loads, I can't tell you how many. And a comment was made to me that that money and the dollars and whatever, I'm sorry, and the, the items, the items, were going to support a private entity that was going to dole out that information. When it was first formed, the committee at the lake was the Rotary Club, the Exchange Club, the Kernville Chamber of Commerce, the Kern Valley Chamber of Commerce, which is Isabella and surrounding areas, and Faith Community Church. They have since expanded and gotten some more, and they have, and I'm going to read you what they said. All members of the committee have joined into the KRVR for insurance coverage. It has been decided that the Family Resource Center will do the vetting and make decisions in distribution. This is at no cost to the fund and has been approved by the school board and all participating agencies. It is also the center of the long-term recovery group that is, and has been assisted by many private entities and public entities in the Southern California area, especially in the Kern River Valley. I got this from, from Mike, who is the president, let me see, Mike Dake, who is the president of the Exchange Club, as well as I got it also from Mr. Smith, who is the president of the Rotary Club. So, so anybody wonders where that money went, it didn't go anywhere, it wasn't intended to do, the only conditions we put on it was the money be spent for people who had a need and demonstrated the need to the appropriate agency. So just so you're aware, there was no money that went anywhere that it wasn't supposed to go. Okay, that's what I have for right now. Okay, the consent calendar. All items, the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comments or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. The first item, number one, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing contract change order number four in the amount of $21,589.88, and contract change order number five, with a decrease in the amount of $20,208.75 with the contractor, CS Legacy Construction Incorporated, for the corporate yachts, yard site. Improvements and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, to sign change order four and change order five, and authorize the tax allocation bond, bonds in the amount of $2,262.68 to be added to the contract. Item number two, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing the professional services agreement with the firm, Wilden Engineering, in the amount of $135,729 to provide field investigation aerial photogrammetry, gravity, what is that, folks? Engineers there?
Photogrammetry.
Photogrammetry, pictures, I am assuming, surveying, design, bidding assistance, and providing a handicap access improvement plan meeting ADA, American with Disabilities Standards, for the Planning and Natural Resources Department, CD 17.13.2, and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, to sign the agreement. Proposed act, number three, proposed action to approve a resolution of the city council, the City of Richcrest, approving an increase to account 001-4630-4632304, project code 75FKMC, in the amount not to exceed $42,000 from the general fund to replace a failing HVAC unit located in the Kermit G. Community Center. Proposed action to approve a, number four, proposed action to approve a resolution of the C, Richcrest City Council, authorizing the acceptance of an off-highway vehicle grant. Number five, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing approval of amended and restated agreement for services with Stradling, Yoka, Carlson, and Roush for the legal services. And number six, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City, Richcrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority, Housing Authority, meeting dated August 3, 2016. Is there anyone in the council who would like to pull any of these items?
I'd like to pull number three.
Number three?
That was it.
Lori? Anyone?
No.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to pull any of those items?
Number two and number five, please.
Number two and five. So we will entertain a motion to approve item one, item four, and item six.
So moved.
Second.
You guys are fast.
Mayor Breeden.
I. Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Sanders.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Okay, item two, Mr. Porter, you asked for that to be pulled.
Thank you, Ronald Porter. I have a problem with the amount of money here because of actually what, I read the whole report that's supposed to be done, and I don't see that it's necessary to spend this kind of money on it. I understand it's probably being mandated by someone. My first question on it would be, who's mandating this study? Is it federal? Is it state that's mandating this study?
Well, actually, both. It starts with FHWA, and then it extends to Caltrans, who administers all those funds. In this particular case, the funding source is actually through HUD, though, which is another branch of the federal government, and it's, is required through, for our CDBG grant.
You answered my second question. This is actually all funded, so it's not coming out of budget anyway.
That's, I want to make sure, yeah, that's completely, yeah, that's completely CDBG, or formerly CDBG. Now they're calling it Natural, Planning and Natural Resources Department, CD number 17.13.2.
All right, well, that answered my questions. I was just making sure I read it properly. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that item? Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Breeden. Aye. Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Sanders.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Okay, item number three, Jim, you asked for that?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So we're replacing a failing HVAC unit on the Kermit G. Center. This, the funding is coming directly from the general fund, is that correct?
Correct. Excuse me, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Do we, it's just been a little while since I looked at the budget, so these are kind of elementary questions here, but we typically take that out of like a capital investment pot of money, right? I mean, is that, did we fund that this year? I know we did a lot of cuts, but.
No, 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 this wasn't funded.
Is your microphone on?
I don't think you're on.
I don't think it's working.
Oh.
It's playing back there.
There we go. There we go. Yeah, this particular item was not funded to my department this, this year. That's why we're, that's why we have to come back to council. If you remember during the hearings, the budget hearings, I said that we have some equipment that's on the brakes and that might be failing within the next year that we'd have to address at some point. This is that point. That was one of the major items? Yeah. Were there other items that, that you can see that might be failing soon, or? Well, I hope not, but, yeah. I mean. Most of, most of the air conditioning units are original, which are about 28 years old, so. Okay. Which they normally have a lifespan of 15 years, maybe, so we're.
I know you identified those in the public here, in the budget hearing.
Right, right.
Yeah, the air.
At that time, was chosen not to fund, which is fine, but, so when something like this occurs, we have to come back to the council for approval of the funding, or, well, we have to. And, and this is an absolutely critical item, I understand that. You cannot go without HVAC in this, this climate. My only concern is, do we need to kind of reevaluate the budget? I mean, we were just barely, barely, barely hanging on to a small, tiny little surplus the last time we looked, $55,000, so. And I think there have been a few other things that have come out of the general fund that weren't planned in the budgeting. I'm just wondering how we're doing on the budget.
Well, I think our cash balance, we'll tie, our cash balance is about $1 million. Yeah, it's right around $1 million, plus we have a reserve of about $725,000, I think it is.
Okay. And as these little things come up, they start adding up, so this isn't so much a question about the Kermit G., but let's, let's catch any budget adjustments we have to make very soon, if we have to make them, so.
You know, ideally, we always say, if you've got, if you're running any sort of operations and involves systems with moving parts, you'd like to have a 10% contingency.
Yep.
We haven't, like, you know, wastewater, like fleet, like parks and recreation, but we haven't had the building within the revenues as far as our budgets for years to actually be able to have contingency, you know, 10%, even 5% contingencies in the budget.
Yeah. The, the good news is, you know, in our budget, we still have been able to maintain the, the ongoing maintenance cost of the units. That's why we have units that have lasted 28 years, so that's the good part. The other good news is, the number I put in there, which I believe was 40, not to exceed $42,000. Yeah. That was for the exact same unit, the same exact manufacturer. Since then, we've, we've found another manufacturer that has a comparable unit, same, same size and everything, for almost half of that. So it's going to be more in the $22,000 range. We just want to be absolutely sure before we use that, install that unit, that it's not going to conflict with the rest of the system, and it looks like it'll work out fine.
So we're going to do an up to, or what are we doing?
This is, this is listed as up to.
Because I know originally it said up to.
Right, that's if we were going to replace, at the time I wrote the report, it was to replace the existing unit with the exact same unit. We found another unit that's quite a bit less, but if you approve it at that level, it's, it's fine, we're not going to spend it, it's just, or you can reduce it, actually, if you want to, because you could say not to exceed 30 at this point. 30 would be safe? Yeah, very safe. Okay.
What are the brands?
The, the brand that's up there now is called York, and the, the unit that we're thinking we're going to put up there is called, is a Coleman unit, which is the exact same as the York, it's just a different brand.
Has the same warranty and everything?
Yes, sir.
Life expectancy?
Yes, sir.
15 years?
They, they say 10 to 15 years, and we're working on close to 30. So the maintenance, you know, is, is a crucial part of that, so we've been doing pretty good.
And you said you checked the compatibility, correct? So we should be good?
Correct. Yep.
I'm comfortable.
Cool. So I'll, I'll just make a motion to approve it as amended to $30,000. That'll work good.
I'll second. Mayor Breeden?
If I may, can I have a quick question?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't see you there.
No, that's fine. I just had a quick question, because how many, how many of those air conditioners do we have on that facility? About?
I don't know, because they're all different sizes.
Well, I mean, how many air conditioners on the, about? 10?
Probably 16.
Okay. What was, what's failing on this unit, just out of curiosity?
The compressor.
The compressor?
Right. We could, we could replace, we could get, we could fix this unit for about 10, a little over $10,000, but because of the age of the unit, that we can replace it for.
We can replace the efficiency.
All right, thank you.
Inefficiency, too, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Breeden? Aye. Councilmember Maurer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Sanders.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Okay, item number five, Ron, you asked for that one?
I just want to make sure I understand this one correctly, Ronald Porter. This is to do with the RDA monies?
Yes, Stratton Colson and Roth has been our RDA, or now successor agency attorneys from the very beginning of the, I believe, the creation of the, of the RDA, are pretty close to that. And they also represent us on the cap allocation money, which is related to RDA, and they also handle the ROPs process.
Gary, get a little closer to it.
The ROPs process as well.
Thank you.
I'm trying to see him as well as I'm talking to him, but I can't do both, so.
That's okay. You said the ROPs process?
The ROPs, ROPs, the state financing process for the RDA.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Well, I was just, and what service is, basically, they're just trying to make sure that we're meeting all the new bells and whistles, or hops and hoops, or whatever?
We, we use them primarily for advice on specific items that we have come up. For example, we looked at the financing relative to the bonds for the wastewater plant, and they helped us on whether or not we would end up having a potential of cap taxable or non-taxable, so that was an example. We use them only on an advisory basis, we do not have a retainer with them, and we just use them as needed when we have a question or need for them.
Okay. Now, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Widnick?
Tom Widnick, I just have a question about, a little bit of wording problem that I have with the contract, and that is that there's something missing that would never have gotten through my 20 years of contract experience, and that is, first, let me say that I understand that there's a termination, a 30-day termination clause within this thing, which means it could be terminated at any time. However, the period of performance on this, I think it's item three, I don't have it in front of me, has a period of performance, and it states, this contract will just con- And when you incorporate an automatic escalation factor in the contract, and then don't have a set time that you would recompete the contract in the future, whether it be five years or eighty years, is immaterial. There should be a period of performance that says, this contract will go from July first to 2016 to some date in the future and end. So, if you have an opportunity to re-advertise the contract, open it up for competition, and renegotiate the terms of the contract. And again, I understand the thirty-day termination thing, which means you could cut off anytime you want to, anyway. But the point is, the contract wording should have a period of performance where this contract would end under normal conditions.
But if we, let me ask a question, because I'm not a contract lawyer, and don't pretend to be, but it would seem to me, whether the contract was going for one year or forty years, if we can disengage on thirty days' notice, what would it matter how long it goes?
Because you're putting the public on notice that this contract does end at some time in the future that would possibly invite competition in the future, as well as you have an automatic escalation factor within the contract, which you would really, at some time in the future, want to renegotiate that either up or down, or whatever. Just that there should be an end date to the contract.
Do we not have that with a thirty-day notice to say we want to renegotiate it or go out for public?
Yes, that would do the same thing, except it doesn't do that for another firm that may be somewhere, or for other firms that say, this contract will end in 2020, and if we want to look at this contract, that's when we do it. Where is there opportunity to, to compete for the contract if you just continue to do this over and over? I think a few years ago, we ran into a situation where we had a, a service in town that went on for twenty years, and people had a lot of problem with that, because there was no end to the contract.
Mr. Pers, I'm sorry.
My, my only point is that I think there should be a date this ends, so you can have it advertised for competition.
It, it was deemed to be a professional service agreement, so it wasn't, there isn't, you know, there, it was designed that way, and we, and probably, we could correct that if you want to have, if the council chooses to have a service timeframe in there. We, from our perspective, we looked at it as being a thirty-day agreement, because we could terminate at the end of thirty days. But if Tom, if the council would like to consider Tom's point, we can, before we execute the agreement, we can have a four-year term date, or any term date you'd like. It's, it's not, frankly, it's not, it's a detail that Tom's bringing up, but it's not a, from our operational standpoint, make a big difference.
No, Keith is...
Can I comment on this for a quick?
Yes, please, Keith.
This is different than a, this is not a contract where you're going to pay regardless of what happens every month, and if nobody pays attention, you keep paying forever. This, they're only, this sets up the terms for them to do hourly work, so it, essentially, they're working from job to job. If, if it turns out that you don't like their performance, you could formally terminate the agreement, but by the same token, you just never give them another piece of work, too. So, if, that's what Mr. Witnick is describing as a policy question. You're certainly free to set up or request the contract be done a certain way. I just don't know in this particular contract if that, if that makes a lot of sense.
But it wouldn't hurt to have that, either, would it?
Well, it's a policy decision.
Gary?
I mean, here's how it would hurt, potentially. If you set a termination date on this thing, and we're in the middle of doing some work with them, I suppose, when the termination hits, then, you know, we could be scrambling, I guess, to get another contract up, potentially, you know. Again, they're sort of working from job to job at this point.
Question for you, Gary. How much longer do we, I mean, the successor agency isn't going to continue on forever. How much longer are we going to need their services anyways?
Well, technically, the successor agency extends as long as our bond issues, issue, which is our tab issue, extends. So, technically, you could argue that it could stay in place for thirty years. Functionally, it probably will not, but...
Okay.
You know, it has to relate to the last functionality of the, of the agency, and that would be the closure of those bonds, I would assume. But given the circumstances today, I couldn't give you an end date, but I would, I would venture to guess, you know, we're looking maybe five or ten years out before it's actually just...
You know, there was, there was a period of time where this firm was giving you advice on a monthly basis, but, and I don't know how often Gary talks to them completely, but I know how much I interface with them, and it's certainly gone down as the, as we got kind of over the hump on the dissolution work.
Yeah, I did check on that, because I thought somebody might ask me. In 2014, we spent twenty-three hundred dollars with them. This is the law firm, remind everybody? Not to be, not to comment, Keith. And in 2015, when we had the whole issue of ROPs and the whole big battle on the, on the litigation issues and so on, that was thirty thousand dollars. Last year, we spent ten thousand dollars with them on an hourly basis. So, we don't use them very often, but we do use them on occasion on an hourly basis.
Okay. My final comment then, I'll close, is just that, in the spirit of competition in the future, that without an end date, there is no way another firm would know this contract is available to even bid on or talk to, because it's a continuing perpetual contract that never ends unless you do a thirty-day termination. There should be a date.
Is there council action? Would you?
I could see the, I could see Tom's point. To be honest, I haven't given it much thought besides the last five minutes.
Can I make one other point?
Yeah.
Without getting into too much specifics, we've recently had an issue that stretches back in time, and fortunately for us, we've been using this particular firm for a while, so they've got a good institutional memory that actually runs a little bit longer than the actual memory of staff. So, and as has been mentioned, this particular work is sort of winding down over time, anyway. The likelihood that you'd want to go to somebody else for the very tag end of this work, you know, I just don't know if that would give you much benefit. You'd lose the institutional memory, and I don't know if you're going to, what you would save necessarily as this thing sort of winds down.
Can, can we ask staff if they could, as these things come up, look at, in your professional opinion and dealing with them and what you see in the future, can you simply say, we are going to put a date on there, if indeed it's going to end in a year or two, or whatever, let us look at that and see? I think Tom's point is right. I agree with Jim, as Tom's point is valid. Can we look at that and see if it's necessary?
Certainly, if the council wishes to have a date put on, in the agreement, we can do that.
Well, I mean, in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as a policy, I think it's probably a good idea to, to always have termination dates.
I frankly don't know of another agreement we have that doesn't have a termination date.
Yeah.
This just happens to be unusual.
Didn't even think to look for it, because that's...
If it's a professional service agreement for a particular service in which they, providing the service from the very beginning, so it's, it's kind of unique in that way.
And it's kind of limited in its scope to a specific topic that also has an ending date.
Right.
So, to me, that kind of puts it on there. I understand Tom's point, and any other contract, we would have a date, but this isn't like that. It's almost like keeping a list of consultants on hand to know who you can go to, type thing.
Any other council comment? Any other public comment? Okay, are we ready?
Motion.
To approve.
Second.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Portman Sanders?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Number seven, discussion of feasibility of funding support staff with city manager or filing, or filling the Department of Public Works position. On this discussion item, it came based originally on a suggestion I had made and went to the Finance Committee, and I was just kind of wondering if the description of the item, to come back to council, was the Finance Committee's description.
Well, we were requested, and what we had on the agenda was to look at the feasibility of splitting the two positions, city manager and public works director. In the past, I think we've talked about the possibility of maybe having support staff, and so I didn't put the wording on here, but that's how it turned out.
Okay.
The purpose of the Finance Committee was to discuss, obviously, we got in a little trouble, Finance Committee meeting. We were informed as we started that it probably should be a closed session item. We went with staff's recommendation, maybe we should have discussed some of it in open session, and then gone from there.
Mike?
I'm, I'm sorry. Mike, Mike? Anyway, the purpose, the reason we put it on the agenda for tonight was to discuss the feasibility, because I know it would cost money to split the two positions.
One of the reasons I had asked for it, I recall, when we were doing the budget, and Mr. Spear had said the time that he was spending on this project, and the ten percent and ten percent and twenty-five percent, or whatever they were, I think most of them were twenty-five percent. And I wondered, I didn't think it was fair to anybody, to the staff, to the city, to the community, to expect a person to do a full-time job with not being able to devote full-time to it. And that's why I asked for it to be on the agenda and go to the Finance Committee, and I didn't think it was going to be an ad hoc finance committee, but I thought it was going to be a finance committee. So, whatever, whatever the word ad, ad hoc gives to it, I want to make sure we understand it's a full existing finance committee, and they continue to do it. It seems to me it's important that we look at how we best can accomplish what we have to do, and, and it seemed to me that it, we could not be doing the very best we could do with saying, you work this many hours, you work this many hours, you work this many hours on, 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 as a city manager, as public works director, and as needed for community development. It just did not seem fair. And so, I asked it to go back to the Finance Committee to look at that and come up with some recommendations. So, where are we?
Madam Mayor, when we did talk about this, we did talk about the support staff, as well as splitting some positions or encompassing other positions, double-duty type, because, what is it? What is the insurance position that Rachel does?
The, well, the risk management.
Risk man, thank you. I could not think of that word to save my life. Risk management, for example, and Mr. Spear can elaborate on how he saw kind of encompassing a couple of roles, and we want a little bit of direction from the council on which, which avenue you want us to really pursue and kind of dig into the numbers for to see what's going to work. But either way we go, one thing we do know is that the process takes a while, so we know we have to start now and start moving forward, so we'll need that as well. But can you kind of talk about or touch base on?
Well, sure. First of all, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to mention the, your comment regarding the, the time splits. The time splits aren't indicative of the hours. I'm, I usually come in about quarter after six in the morning. I'm upstairs between eight and nine, usually by eight, eight-fifteen. I was up there before eight this morning. The first part of the day, which is from six to eight-fifteen or so, is downstairs in public works, I'm meeting with all the division managers. And then I stay after nine, and then when meeting's timed, it's after that. I stay till six at night, the, and doing the, performing the duties of the city manager. But the, the time splits are based on a value basis. The fact is, in terms of the, the premise, the concept, I think it would be great to get, to be able to find money to get support, but my recommendation wouldn't be the splitting the duties and bringing on a public works director. The reason is, is the cost associated with bringing in that department head is about a hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars a year. On our budget, I just don't really see how we can come up with two-hundred-thousand dollars when I've been performing that on, with minimal hours, really, for the last four years. The, and so I think that the premise, the concept, to free up some of my time to be involved in other areas, I think that's great, but my suggestion would be actually finding some, or filling some support positions. When I came to the, to the city ten years ago, the city manager had a support staff of five people. He had his assistant city manager, he had administrative services director, he had administrative analyst, he had a confidential secretary, and he had a receptionist. If you walk up into my offices, all those workstations are there, but there are no people. There haven't been people in those positions for four years. And so, with that in mind, my recommendation, when and if we could find money, would be to either be able to fund the administrative services manager. That position oversees the city clerk position, the risk management position, any out-city contracts, and the personnel, but that position is not filled. And I think that would benefit the city the greatest. As far as a personal benefit, I think the administrative analyst is someone that could work very close with me, helped me do the research, such as the research we've been doing with regard to the county contracts and, and different research regarding staff reports and requesting information. In terms of the timing, though, the hesitation would be, we now know that L2 has been given the number V, so our new public safety and streets measure is going to be measure V. And I know that if that measure doesn't pass, we're not really looking at finding additional staff to support me, we're looking at the potential of laying off the equivalent of fifteen police officers. So, I think in terms of timing, we probably should reconsider this mid-year and after we know what the results of is, of the election in November.
I appreciate those, those comments, Mr. Spear. In terms of planning ahead, and I agree with you on waiting, because quite frankly, I don't, I mean, from a purely policy perspective, absolutely, we need to, we need to have a public works director with, you know, his own, his own position. However, I, there's no, I just don't see how we could possibly afford it right now. But I do want to, as part of this discussion, I want to ask staff, is public, a public works director the highest priority position to fill right now? And if, if not, what position would you like to see filled if we had the money to do it?
The administrative services manager. It's the position that was created about a year ago by this council to be a management position, but not having to fill it at the department head level, because the code provides for administrative services director, but as you know, of the six department heads that are identified in the municipal code, only two of those positions are filled right now. And administrative services director is one of those positions that's vacant right now. But rather than having to fill it at the director level, we, we created management positions in all those departments, and it's this administrative services management position is, I think, would be most beneficial all the way around. Not most, necessarily most beneficial to me, I think that would be the administrative analyst, but I think for, in terms of benefit to the city, I think would be the administrative services manager position.
So, I don't think we've ever had that position or the department equivalent position filled since I've been in the council.
Not since probably 2008, when our budget started turning down. That was probably the last one.
So, educate me on that. What, what does that person do if they were...
Well, at a director level, but also at a, at a, this management position level. They oversee all city contracts, they oversee personnel, they oversee the city clerk's office, and they oversee risk management and other duties as necessary, and they report directly to the city manager.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I think we have, we have a few possibilities of pursuing some money. We've mentioned, you know, the property tax, not raising it, but getting our fair share of property taxes from the county. Pilt was another one, but, but all those are pretty far out. But I do want to plan ahead. I think this is a good discussion to have, because we need to know what we need to do in the future, what we need to be able to afford.
So, just to tack on to that, because we know that we have somebody retiring, and we're going to, I am thinking the admin service manager, administrative service manager, only because that would help fill that with some of the salary, but again, we need to be, in my opinion, I know we don't have a lot of... be, in my opinion, I know we don't have a lot of money, but proactive is better than reactive any day. So, because it does, it takes a while to advertise and look, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when I came on at least, you still had Eva, so you had, and Rika was over there, so there was more, more people to help, and then that slowly had to change. But also Lauren helps in, your Assistant Public Works, right?
That's correct.
And so between the two of you, we should be covered there, but then we're going to have to have Risk Management, because we have to. So, and so to me, that makes the most sense, in having it as a manager, as a cost savings over a Department Head, and we're going to have part of the money because of salary. Does that make sense? It's the only thing I can think of.
I'd like to hear if the public has any comments.
Eddie, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was actually leaning more towards what Mr. Sanders had made mention of, but I was, wanted to ask, those duties that you make him mention of, Mr. Spears, you, you would be releasing most of those over outside of the, more or less the legal aspect of, of what you currently do?
I didn't quite understand the question.
Well, it appears to me that there's a lot of legal things that you do for us.
That's correct.
With this new person, this new person, would that allow you to still be in that, that realm, or would they take on some of those responsibilities?
Well, it would allow me the ability to delegate a lot of that. I would still, you know, direct and control that particular work, but that would allow me to delegate, because that's one of the things at a City Manager level that you would expect, is that you would, that you have staff to delegate to. And now if I delegate, I look in the mirror, and so that's one of the reasons for the recommendation for the Administrative Services Manager.
Okay.
Could I ask one more? Oh, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. If, so, say, you know, again, we're dreaming here, say we've got enough money to, to fill that position, Administrative Services Manager, what would be the number two position that you would feel is, is next in line priority?
Well, two things, I mean, for me personally, it would be the Administrative Analyst, because they'd work directly with me in this, in the same area. But the, at that particular point in time, I would probably want to look at the 46 positions that we've lost in the last five years, because I wouldn't want to say, well, all the need is with City Manager, because other departments have lost a lot of full-time employees too over the last five years.
Yeah, I'm referring, so, yeah, I'm referring to the entire city staff.
Yeah.
Okay. You know what we really need to do is hold like a, a strategic workshop thing, where we, we bring these types of discussions into, into that.
I'm not suggesting we're going to make a decision tonight, but I did have some questions. I was reading the job descriptions of the people that we have serving right now, and I saw that different things people were supposed to be doing that have fallen by the wayside because they don't exist, the people, the, the person doesn't exist to do those. But I did see the City Clerk, I mean, Assistant City Clerk, was your deputy or assistant, or what is it, the title? I can't remember the exact title.
We don't have a Deputy City Clerk.
Okay.
There are, well, actually shouldn't say that, we have three, as I suppose, and I believe, but they're not, it's not a title.
Okay, whatever, okay, don't name it a title, somebody to help you with that. We, that, we don't have that any longer?
No.
Okay. Okay, I would, I would.
The reason is, is we have an Executive Secretary, which is Rika, but her assigned responsibilities is, she has always been the administrative support for the Community Development Department. So her first order as far as priorities is she has to, she is the support for Gary, which is Economic Development, she's support for Planning, she's also the support for the, for solid waste, for our in-house and our, with our interaction between our Waste Management and our HFA, your consultant, and Cal Recycle Board. And then in her spare time, she functions in the Deputy City Clerk role.
Maybe that was where I came up with the Deputy City Clerk, okay.
Madam Mayor, can I interject something?
Please, sir.
You know, I'm aware of the fact that there are positions that are required to be filled by the Municipal Code that are not filled, a number of them.
That's what it's going to be.
And so, we, we've been acting as if this has been a temporary problem, but it's turned into kind of a chronic problem. So I guess one of the things to think about is, at some point, now, you guys, most, most of this is not required by state law, this is what you guys, the prior city councils sort of enacted at prior times. So my only point is that it would be appropriate, I think, as part of this discussion and planning to revisit the Municipal Code and make sure that the, the code matches the reality of what we can actually afford to pay for.
That's a good point.
Go ahead.
I just say, I just say that's a good point.
I agree, because that was one of the things when I was reading what each person is supposed to be doing, what liability do we have if those positions are not filled when we've said they should be?
I'm not going to discuss liability in a part of a public session.
Okay, all right.
But, but understand that that's a requirement that we imposed on ourselves.
Yeah, I'm taking notes.
Sorry, Dave. Okay, I won't use the word liability, I'll look at what should be done, okay.
What, what should be done is, we should try to make sure the Municipal Code reflects the reality, and the reality's sort of changed over time, so it would be appropriate to, I'm sorry.
We should, we should make an effort to make sure that the Municipal Code reflects our reality, and I think maybe we've been in denial for a while about what that reality is, but it's changed over time, and so it's probably appropriate to go back and consider that as part of this overall discussion.
So that, so that should be a council agenda item, then?
Well, I, I think, I don't want to put the shoe, the cart before the horse, you, I mean, you, you need to figure out with Dennis what the priorities are, and then we go back and, and change the Municipal Code to match that, I think.
Which sounds like the committee.
So, in the previous council, we did a strategic workshop where we, it was a several-day thing, where we, we talked about the city's goals, and a lot of those were economic things. But I think it might be a good idea to have more of a budget-focused, strategic workshop, where we, we talk about these things and really hash it out, you know, it's not going to be a quick thing, but, and, I mean, that's a great idea. You know, the reality is, we're not going to bounce back to full staff anytime soon. No matter, I mean, we can have a lot of economic development and still be hurting. I think we really could. There's no one, one easy answer that's going to solve all our problems right now.
What is, again, I'm, I'm asking questions, obviously, because I don't have the knowledge. Reserves are there as reserves, as needed, for emergencies, as things come up. What are we, are we legally defined by how much money we have to have in reserves?
Well, I'll let Ty address that, but I think the, the primary reason is, first, if you ever want to go out for, well, for, for your fiscal condition, and if you ever want to go out to bonds, you're supposed to have at least 15% of your operating budget, that's a minimum. A 15% of your operating budget should be, in, you should have reserves that equates to at least 15% of your operating budget, that's a minimum amount, and there's.
Yeah, the only thing right now. That we're required to maintain certain levels of funding is in our self-insurance, to maintain that certification. But one thing with reserves, what you got to look at is they're one-time-only money, and typically, you want to spend those on one-time-only purchases or, or projects, not, not on something that's going to be ongoing and perpetuate the problems we already have.
Otherwise, we'd run out of funding for our Administrative Services Manager, whoever we hire in five years or.
I, I'm not saying we do that, I'm simply saying that reserves are there for a reason. And if the reason, if, if having somebody doing a job can bring us income, rather than costing us dollars, it would seem to me, we ask everybody, every business, every entity in this community to invest in themselves, but we can't? And, and that's a question.
What, what position could we fund that would eventually bring in more revenue to fund itself?
That's what I'm asking.
I, I can't think of one, I mean, I don't know of one. I'd like to hear an answer to that.
One would think that, when we look at, I've, I've been sitting in the Broadband Committee forever, and we invested in businesses, we invested in ourselves, we invested in this. I don't know that broadband is going to bring us a billion dollars, and I don't know that some of the other events we have coming up will not bring us dollars. I just know if we don't say to ourselves, we are willing to, we believe in ourselves enough, we asked for a casino, we asked, we had, someone from the casino asked us to say, I'm willing to put dollars into this community, let's use them. Let's look at when people come in and spend TOT tax, and when we have multimillion dollars coming in from, from transient occupancy tax, what are we doing with them? How are we not investing in ourselves to do that, to use those dollars?
It's appropriate to ask, is the level of reserve set correctly? But if we're setting reserve, I, I'm piping in because I've got to emphasize what Ty's saying, we, we have a certain amount that we need to have set aside.
I agree.
As a self-insured retention, this relates to our own risk management and, and our insurance issues, which is, you know, obviously a particular interest to me. So I, I would caution, I'm not sure this is what you're suggesting, but, but, you know, I would caution strongly against trying to temporarily take any money out of that, because we don't know when we're going to need to tap into it, and unfortunately, litigation sometimes seems to come in a cluster for some reason, it's another name for that, too. But, so, you know, I would just caution against temporarily dipping into that money if it's, you know, if it's set correctly.
Okay.
In addition to that, we don't know what's going to happen economically in the future. Are we going to hit another recession, and is things even going to get worse than they are right now? So, I mean, well, I, I'm very, I worked really, really hard to get the reserves up to where they're at today, we all did, and I, I'm not, I don't even want to talk about.
Well, I'm not saying we take them out of reserves.
The self-insurance reserve is separate from the regular reserve, is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, that's set aside.
Correct, but our levels of general fund reserve are kind of at a minimum as well.
Well, isn't the general fund reserve basically the money we got from the sale of the property to the hospital?
Sell the property is, is the official reserve, we also have the fund balance that's in there, and that's what we need to maintain.
But that's not really called a reserve.
We've been unofficially calling it a reserve for years.
Well, that's even, that helps with cancer, too, as far as the.
Yeah.
Let me talk just a minute without, I realize this is a little bit different from what we're seeing, but yesterday I sat down and tried to figure out how wonderful this community is, the great points, because we some, we sometimes always talk about how bad things are, and we forget the good things. But let me share with you, in the last two years, and this is just off the top of my head, we have lost, these are businesses that have left this community, Controlled Chaos, All That Glitters, Lindsay's Furniture, Camilla's, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Coon's Hobby Shop, Solar, Kelly's Closet, Indian Wells Valley Veterinary, Ferris's Restaurant, Purnell's Kitchen, Alonge's, Cool Threads Two, Toskana, Spice Symphony, Victoria's Restaurant, Cafe Dazzling, Joel's Off the Edge, Sierra Furniture, Treasures to Cherish, Exclusive Fashions, A1 Glass, Rose Gardens, Staples, Tuxedo, Valley Fence, Sierra View Home Care, Sanders Home Care, Senior Services of IWV, Neighborhood Market, Fabic Notions and More, Audio Video Concepts. You look at these and you say, those were monies that were coming into this community. There's 27 businesses, just off the top of my head, without even thinking. I'm not saying it's our fault, I'm not saying that we should bear the burden, I'm not saying some of them just didn't retire because they were tired, but if we don't begin to understand the value of economic development in this community, shame on all of us, because that is where our future, that is how we grow our future. When we say we can't touch items, and again, I'm not talking necessarily about reserves, I want us to look at, is our money being spent most wisely? Do we, we have a swimming pool that is going to need considerable amount of work in a short period of time. We have a group that is trying to bring people in. Two weeks ago, there was over 200 boys and girls in here, eating more pizza than they knew what to do with, because we had a baseball tournament. It benefited, they, all of them stayed at hotels, all of them, all of them did well at hotels and restaurants, because they spent the dollars here. If we don't look at how we invest in ourselves, like the swimming pool, because then we can get teams in here, dollars, things that produce money, I don't know how we're going to get that money, I'm just saying if we don't begin to look at it, we will never look at it. And is our option only to say, we can't, or we can? That is our option, it is our choice, it is nobody else's choice, but this community. And how many of those businesses were gone because of the way things are here? I think we, the most important thing, future, the most important thing, other than budget, facing our future is economic development. We need to grow ourselves and believe in ourselves, and believe that the end is not near, but we are beginning to grow and do things. I would like to hear, I know Mike said you wanted to hear what the rest of council had to say, what the public had to say, and I don't mean to monopolize everybody, and I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm simply saying we must do something. We had an Economic Development Committee that met last year, brought options to a, a, a formal committee, and we're waiting to hear back on what they're, what they see. We can't continue to depend on the Navy, we have to depend on ourselves. So, I'm sorry, I'm not preaching. Public comment.
Dave Matthews, address is on file. As far as the positions that Mr. Spears ran out of there, other than the, I forget what it was, the Administrative Services Position or something, could any of those positions be temporarily or part-time occupied or provide, have benefit from volunteers, sort of like on the order of the pack, or the, I think it's still manning, volunteers are still manning the front desk out here?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, something like that. And I know that would not help us grow, but as far as the Economic Development Committee that was put together last year, I thought we had the final report from Mrs. Sumner.
We did, Mrs. Sumner gave that.
So, do we need to get another set of people together and look at over and make some recommendations or something?
It went to the East Kern Economic Development Corporation, wasn't that where it went, Gary? What was that committee? Yeah, the East Kern Economic Development Corporation, that is putting together a, a more fully-defined actions that are available and fundable.
The Kern.
Am I, am I representing that fairly?
Yes, the East Kern Economic Development.
Oh, East Kern.
Is doing a actual professional, as a professional consultant, doing a plan for the entire East Kern and Richcrest within that plan, and we submitted it to that group for.
Well, okay, that's, that's a good start, but I, maybe, maybe the city ought to look at their own.
Indian Wells Valley EDC is an organization that's been meeting, and they are many of the entities, both governmental and nonprofit entities, as well as some businesses, that, that are meeting and coming up, and they're the ones that came up with the Sports Commission. And there's been two major events. And there's been two major events that they've brought in to this community, bringing big dollars into the community. Not anything we can all retire on, but something we can be truly grateful for.
Okay, well, I do know that some of the recommendations that were, come up with in, oh, I forget which committee it was now, but there were several that I don't seem to see any action on. And maybe if you just tell me where I can get a copy of that report or see a copy of that report, maybe I can just go over it and maybe offer some other suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you make that happen?
Stan Ratoro. My feeling is that looking at job descriptions or job positions is probably the wrong way to look at it. My feeling is we need to look at what objectives we want to do over the next year, two years, five years. And so I think I'm inclined to go along with what our mayor is saying, quite frankly. Looking at our budget for this FY and comparing it with just six years ago, our revenue is down $1 million. So even if Measure D, first time I've ever said Measure D out loud.
V.
V is in victory.
V.
V. Wow, damn, see, that's my ear. Okay, well, I'm glad I didn't.
D and V are very similar, so.
They really are, thank you, I appreciate that. Basically, getting an extra $900,000 out of Measure V still puts us behind where we were six years ago. So in terms of looking at objectives, even though I understand the need for a public works director, and I know our city manager is overworked and right now, my feeling is that our needs are more in line with getting revenue. Because revenue is the only thing that's going to pull us out of where we are. In the long run, we've just got to get more revenue. So, you know, I don't have the answer, but it seems to me, at one point in time, we had a community development director or something like that.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure what his job was. Maybe he was something like an economic development director. But if we're going to spend money on additional labor, manpower, it seems to me we need to be focused, regardless of what the title is, in getting economic development. Right now, we've got one person who handles both the retail and the industrial development in this town. And even though, you know, he's overworked, too. We need to set objectives and then pursue those objectives. And we don't have the personnel that we need, as far as I'm concerned, to actually go out and pursue those objectives. We've had a time or two, you know, some options and opportunities. And my feeling is, we need to have more capability of following up, pursuing those items, aggressively pursuing those items. So even though I understand why maybe this sort of started around the public works director relationship, my feeling is that right now, the city manager is also the public works director, probably the community development director, and as well as the traffic engineer. And as far as I know, Mr. Spear may be the only one who is actually officially consigned things as a traffic engineer. So he is overloaded, and that's too bad. But if we're going to spend money, it needs to be in line with our objectives. So I kind of like Mr. Sanders' idea of having a group group where we actually talk about, what are our objectives? You know, and then align our spending in line with those objectives. But my feeling is that economic development, increased tax base have to be part of it. The PILT has to be part of it, the property tax realignment, 5.2%. Compared with other people getting 10, 15%. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, and we don't have the people that we need to pursue them. So we may need to spend, I'm in line with the mayor, we may need to spend money to make money. Okay. So if we don't, the option is that, or revert back to the county, let's face it. I mean, there really is no alternative. So we need to commit what we need to commit to get the job done, in my opinion. Thank you.
One thing, sir, I'd like to say is that, I think you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the goals. And when I came in, I did not realize that the previous city council had already done a whole set of goals and where they saw us going. And so I didn't know until I asked Dennis a few weeks ago, where are those goals? And so he has been getting them to get to us so we can have that discussion. Because quite frankly, I was very surprised that we had goals that we, the new city council, did not know anything about. And so I'd like to see what they were. What did the previous council think was important enough to write down and say, "These are our objectives, this is what we want to do"?
I think I have seen those in the past. Quite frankly, I think most of them are such a high level. It's not something you can hand over to a person and say, "Let's implement this."
Yeah.
I think we've got more.
Let's be realistic with them.
Yeah, more short-term, real, something you can touch and feel now, that might be actually better than what we came up with two or three or four years ago now. I don't remember. A lot of times, those goals just seem, you know, they're more something you write on a wall.
Well, the idea in terms of strategic planning, first of all, the council had already established the, in the last go-around, we went through the missions, visions, values. That was established. Where we got into goals is there were survey goals, there was also staff goals. And the city council wanted to see those goals from staff and from the surveys so that they could take a look at those goals and then develop what they felt might be their own goals. But this happened just before the, either the last election or maybe the election before that. And the council decided that they didn't want to go forward with the goals because they might say something that might disrupt the election that might not be in their favor. And so that's where that goal-setting stopped. But with regarding to goals, goals are concepts. It's goals, objectives, actions. You can't implement till you get down to an action standpoint. You also don't just throw a goal up there without analyzing. You do what they call a SWAN analysis, the strength, weakness, opportunities, threats, and you ultimately develop a Talos matrix to be able to assess the feasibility of the goal. And then, when you sort through them all, you only want to identify maybe three to five maximum goals that you want to pursue. But I mean, it's a strategic planning process. And as I explained to the mayor, I'd be happy to do a background overview where we were. And if you want to take off and provide the goals that had been submitted by the community and had been submitted by the staff. And if the council says, "Hey, we don't like any of those, let's start over," we can start over, or we can build on what had been done, you know, up to that point. And then a comment on community development. The community development director has provided for, in municipal code, provides for community development's kind of an overall concept for quality of life. He also oversaw the economic development, he also oversaw the planning function, and he also oversaw development services regarding development coming into town. But that, the entire department, except for one exception, was never funded by the general fund. Well, it was, and the reason the community development director was, position was eliminated is that was within weeks of the Supreme Court decision to eliminate RDAs. Because that's what cut off RDA funding. And RDA funding is what provided for all the positions that were under community development.
Well, we may have to get to the point where the general fund is going to fund some of that, just to be realistic. The other thing, I guess, we need to go back and look in history, and we need to look at all that stuff. But we also have to get to the point where we don't just redo history. We need to get to the point where we do action. Because one of the problems we've had is we keep going through the goals and analysis, and then that's where it stops. So if we have to spend money to get to the action part of that scenario, I totally agree with what you're saying, but we've got to do the action because that's the only thing that's going to increase our revenue.
Don't disagree with you at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sir?
Scott Leahy. Can I ask somebody to please refresh my feeble memory? Do we, oh, no, okay. Do we still fund RACVB? We don't anymore? Okay. So that went away.
That's a two, well, it's still there, but it's a two and a half percent that comes from the hotels and the members of that. That is the Tourism Improvement District.
That's a membership, that's not a public fund.
That's right.
Okay.
TOT and TID come only from those hotels who fund it.
Thank you, I was just wanting to get an answer to that. I just wanted to emphasize that when I heard Mr. Spear talking, what I was hearing was that an administrative analyst would probably be the most help for him. But that right now, it might be better to not do anything as far as adding another position to the city, particularly in light of the fact that we have Measure V coming before us here in another 83 days. And it's not that I don't think that we should be hiring for these positions. I think it's wise that we have all of the jobs in the city that we must have done well. But perhaps for the time being, as a suggestion, maybe one of the things that we could do is a lateral shifting of duties, perhaps to Mr. Culp for, to take some of the load off. Perhaps to the city clerk in the administrative realm, asking her to step up and perhaps do a bit more oversight, to take a little bit of pressure off of Mr. Spear. Now, the reason I'm saying this is that what I'm looking at this is if I were a business owner. And if I were a business owner, and I was looking at my business strangling what I do, I would first of all try to maximize the utilization of the people that I have. And one of the things that you can do is you can shift duties over and say, "Okay, you're going to help me pick up the slack so that all of the weight isn't falling on one person, such as Mr. Spear, so he has to worry about all of these different things." So I'm just asking that at least we might consider, as another option. I'm not really going to make a recommendation, you guys are elected to do that, but as something to consider, perhaps lateral transfers, lateral transfers of some duties and perhaps some reorganization to maybe handle some of this workload. And we appreciate all the work you do, Mr. Spear. We know it's not easy, and I'm glad to see those streets being worked on. Thank you.
Warren Cox, my address is on file. Just a couple of thoughts for maybe council to consider. Mr. Spear is overworked. He has a lot going on. So now if you look at at least my involvement with the city in the last 19 months, as I come to council meetings, and that, how many items have come before you that you're having the first public hearing, you have to vote on it tonight? A lot. And that shouldn't happen. And so when you start turning around and you look at splitting the responsibilities, so maybe he has time to do what he needs to do, you might be able to actually hear the information before you have to vote on it. Is there a consideration, almost without exception, every once in a while there's an exception, in a council meeting, you find, "We're hiring a consultant. We're a consultant to death. We don't have staff that can do it." So are we really saving money by hiring the consultant when we actually could maybe fill a position? And I don't know the numbers, maybe Ty could tell you. But it just, sometimes in a shift, when they talk about a lateral shift or if they talk about reallocation of funds, it might be a consideration. Because as an outsider looking in, it is offensive to me, as a citizen, for you to have to vote on something that you're not fully briefed on. I've stood at this pulpit and given information that both staff and attorney didn't know. And you should have all the information. And so if he's overworked to the point that he can't inform you 100% of the things that you need to make decisions on, then you're shortchanging yourself as well as the community. So you might consider, when you say, "Well, we can't afford it." Well, can you not afford it? And are we hiring consultants that maybe could pay for it? And utilize some of those responsibilities. So I'm just trying to give you options, because as an outsider, it seems like you're handicapped in your job because he's handicapped in his job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Okay. Staff, I mean, council? Mike?
Well, I think maybe the finance committee needs to look at some goals and objectives. I guess I'm going to skip forward to committee. As Stan mentioned, I think we need to set a specific time and date.
Thank you, because I won't do it without it. Yeah, we need ourselves to death and get nothing done.
Yeah. So, and then we can put certain items on the agenda, and then staff knows that we have that meeting every month, and then it gets properly put out, and it's not called.
Do you want that in a closed session?
Pardon? No more closed sessions. I apologize to the committee for that. I, you know, I didn't know about the discussion prior to the meeting, that maybe we should do it in closed session. Had I had time to really think about it, I think we would try to do as much as we could in open session and not even go into closed session. But that goes back to something that Warren just said. You know, we don't find out about things until the last minute, and then we have to make decisions that we should be able to think about first. But I don't know, Lori, what your schedule is, but maybe we should have the finance committee meeting right after the city org meeting. Same night, we finish the city org meeting, we go into finance committee meeting with the four of us and the public, and then the planning commissioners can leave if they want. Well, they could stay as public if they want to, but.
I'm not opposed to that. I just may need to adjust time, because the whole problem with getting back from being on the road to city org is that five o'clock timeline, six is not a problem usually, typically, not always. But it's the five. So I'll make some adjustments on my end, but yeah, I'm totally amenable to that idea. And I agree with the timeline thing and such.
And then I don't know how staff would handle that, but we'd have to have two separate agendas because it's a separate meeting, but we need to post at the same time that city org is posted, finance is posted. Does that make sense? And thank you, Stan, I agree with you 100% on that.
Sir? Any comment?
Not really, outside of the fact, Madam Mayor, I think it was commendable of you to bring this to us. And I think both council persons that are going to be on this committee, and I think we should work the committee that we have, to let them do what they do and get back with us so we can make a decision on it.
I do have one, more than one, but on this thought, because I know there's pluses and minuses, and we talk about laterals or cross-training, however you want to phrase that. And I want to talk about the flip side of that for just a moment, and not because I'm a full and firm believer in cross-training, please do not misunderstand me. But I also have a problem with, now I have somebody who's going to retire, and guess what, I have to hire two people to do that one person's job, because she's the only one. And then what does that do to the budget? So I want to explore some of that to find out where it is actually the most beneficial to combine and cross-train and put some of those together, and then where we end up handicapping ourselves when we can't. we end up handicapping ourselves when we can't. Does that make sense, kind of exploring some of that, that, that would fit better, so that we can keep it in one category, so we don't have to hire two to replace one? The other thing was the timeline, actionable items, we have to do that, we need timelines, deadlines, the whole thing, 'cause I'm tired of meeting just to meet. And then we had talked in the budget about doing the economic development and putting a planner to work economic development and planning, so I wanna explore that some more as well. And I think that's it on this one.
Jim?
Yeah, I don't know that I have anything new to add. I, I, this has been a really good discussion, though. I'm, I'm glad we're having this discussion, because it addresses probably one of the most critical needs we have right now, that quite frankly, the, the public does not see just how much of a bare-bones skeleton staff we have. And, and it's, so I think it's good for us to discuss it, I think it's good for, for you guys to hear it, and we've had some excellent comment from the public as well on that. And so, yeah, again, I think the number one thing we need to focus on right now is just getting more revenue. Because until we have that, we can't solve these problems.
One other thing I'd like to add, I'd like us to look at, when we talk about cross-training and doing work in departments, an item was passed, I think it was on our watch, but I'm not sure whether it's one I read from previous councils or our watch, that in order to be a department head or whatever, you had to have a degree. I think that is short-sighted when you only, this is the, this is the criteria, and everything else doesn't matter, how long you've done it, how much you know. I think of multimillionaires who didn't have a degree, and that did that mean that they were not of value? I, I want us to look at that again, especially in cross-training, when we say that you must be able to have a degree in fine arts, so then you can be a city planner. It, it has to be a reasonable approach to people, and, and if this was on our watch, and I frankly can't remember it, but if it was, it was.
It was.
I think it, I think it was a mistake we made, and I want us to look at that again and see how we can be better served by the people we have, by new people that may come in to make us be better, do more for our, our city. I think, I'm not saying this is, has hurt us, but I don't know that it's helped us either, so anyhow, that's what I have on that item. Is there any other comment?
Was that direction you was giving?
I'd like us to look at it. How it's done, that's our staff to be able to tell us.
Sounds like a future agenda item.
Yeah, okay. All right, sorry, wasn't necessarily that, but okay. So where are we going with this? We're gonna go back to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee will look at some of the recommendations and concerns that were projected tonight, and give, come back to us with a report.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Committee reports. City Org.
Meets next week.
Infrastructure.
Meets next week.
There is no Ad-Hoc Water Conservation Committee meeting right now until we get to the point of where we are with water. Parks and Rec and Quality of Life, they have not met. Ad-Hoc Use Advisory.
Have not met.
That's on the second Wednesday. Action Committee, that is the of every other month, have you met on that one?
No, we have not. By and surely.
Okay. RACVB.
First of the month.
First of the month. Okay, other committee reports or boards and commissions. Mike, do you have any?
Kern called tomorrow night.
Okay, Eddie?
I think Councilman Sanders is gonna make a report on our meeting at the City of the.
Go ahead, man.
No?
You got this. I do have that. Go ahead, Lori.
BLM is my only other meeting, go ahead, and that is, here I go again, not being able to talk, meets the fourth Thursday of the month at six, so we have not met yet.
Jim?
Yes. Eddie Thomas and I attended the Desert Mountain Division League of California City Meetings, League of California Cities Meeting last Thursday, well, Friday, last Friday. It was a very good meeting, we, for, for those of people who aren't familiar with the League of California Cities and how that's structured, the Desert Mountain Division is kind of our, our local region, and the League of California Cities is a lobbyist organization that lobbies, it's made up entirely of local governments, city governments, municipalities, that lobbies the state for issues of local control, things that, that protect the, the local governments. And it's, it's really our only tool that we have to interact with the state and to, to have some sort of input on, on what the state does. So, we talked about several, several issues, and Eddie, feel free to jump in if I'm missing something, or you wanna comment on something. So the transportation bill is one issue we discussed, we had a, a state assemblyman there, Jay Obernol, I can't pronounce his last name, but he's been really good, he shows up to all the meetings and, and tells us what's going on in the state. So basically, the transportation bill is, I mean, we see it here in our local government, the gas taxes, is, the revenues are always declining, they're expected to continue to decline, and, and meanwhile, it, it doesn't seem like the state really has a good path forward, because they're still talking about the gas tax. You know, let's increase the, the gas tax. Well, the bottom line is, too many vehicles are going electric, too many vehicles are going very fuel-efficient, and so the gas tax isn't gonna solve our transportation prob, transportation being road maintenance, something that's very near and dear to Rich Crest is a problem. And so there's, I mean, it, it just doesn't, doesn't seem like the state's moving in the right direction right now to solve that one. Jay brought up a few things that, that I felt like were really good ideas, a lot of funding that's currently going, coming from transportation, that's not going back into transportation, it's going into the general fund. So he's saying, look, let's forget the gas tax for now, 'cause it's not working, it's not going to work, let's just take the funding that we already have. For example, a billion dollars a year comes from waste stations and highways, that just goes into the general fund and it doesn't get spent on transportation. The gas, the diesel tax doesn't go to roads. Cap and trade, you know, that, that, that all doesn't go to roads. So, so I don't know if there's really an action there for, for the city to take, but it's, it's something to be informed about and be educated about. Let's see here. Yeah, I'm not sure if I wanna go on over my notes here. We'll go, we did talk about Prop 57, which is, is coming onto the ballot for all of us to vote on, and first look, when I started reading it, it, it didn't sound bad, but looking through it a little bit more, it's kind of a scary deal, and it's, it's another prison overcrowding relief thing. So this is like the, the succession to AB 109, and it's taken it even farther, and it, and it has some very bad implications, it's gonna cause a lot of problems for our law enforcement. The, the police chief organization, the state organization is against it.
That's another Jerry Brown bill, same as the last one.
Exactly.
He's the one that pushed, spent a lot of money getting that on the ballot.
And don't just read the title, 'cause the title sounds like it's absolutely wonderful.
Exactly.
Prop 47 got through, this thing is horrible.
Yep. On the surface, it looks good, underneath, it is, it is really bad stuff. So it's, it's making a lot of felonies, non-violent crimes, and, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm just scratching the surface on my research on Prop 57, but so far it looks horrible. So this is just Jim Sanders speaking right now, but I urge you all, please, vote no on Prop 57. Again, just me speaking.
Peggy just speaking.
We do have a few action items that the league is, is taking positions on that I want you guys to all be aware of. SB 897 is a workers' compensation bill. The, the league is taking a position to oppose this bill, not necessarily because there isn't a need for expanded working, workers' compensation, and that's really what this is, it's expanding workers' compensation. However, it's, it's, it's kind of mandating at the state level that we expand workers' compensation, even in cases where it's may not even be necessary. So the league has taken a position saying, let the local governments decide when, on a case-by-case basis, we need to expand workers' compensation, and, and let's keep the state government out of that issue. AB 779 is a local government financial disclosure bill. Again, another one on the surface, it looks really good, it's basically mandating all the local governments to report their salaries and, and compensation for elected officials, which is fine, and, and city officials, you know, the, I think just department heads. But the thing is, that's already on the books, there's already a law that does that.
I thought that was already there.
Yeah, we already see it.
Yeah. So this actually imposes requirements that go much farther beyond what's already required, and it's gonna be quite onerous to the local governments. So, and also, the state, of course, is exempt from this bill.
Of course.
So the league is taking a position to oppose this bill, because it's gonna increase costs for us, and it's, it's not necessary. Two more and I'm done. AB 2835 is an employee orientation and information session bill. The league has taken a position to oppose this one as well. Basically, it's requiring, it's mandating that for new employees, we orient them and immediately give them instructions on what, you know, employee unions, organizations are out there. To me, it seems like it's something that's just going to support unions, and, and it's more mandates and more, you know, requirements that's gonna cost us money and that we don't really need, so. Housing Finance, I'm trying to remember what this one was, but the league took a position to support this one. Oh, yes, I remember now. Okay, so it's, it's basically allowing the cities to make greater use of the Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, we've even mentioned that tonight, so. So that looks like a good one, it's gonna give us a lot more flexibility on how we spend that money. AB 723, and that concludes my report on the League of California Cities.
I did not attend the Air Pollution Control District meeting, I had a flat tire on the way and watched Mick Gleason go right past me, and I'm going on the side of the road, but anyhow, so I didn't make it to it, and finally, so I didn't, my apologies, no report. On the GSA, there's going to be a meeting on the 25th, that's the Groundwater Sustainability Agency Group that was formed on the 25th at one o'clock here at the city. And that's what I have to report. Other committees, oh, we've done that. Okay. So the next item, I'll turn the page, is a city manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, two things really to report. One is just a reminder, and that is, our new public safety and streets measure is V. V. We can't.
Victory.
We can't advocate, but the new measure is V. And then the second thing that I wanted to report is that the, the chief plant operator and our consultant and I will be meeting with the Finance Division, if you will, of the Department of Water Resources, it's a pre-financing for the wastewater treatment plant, that'll be next Wednesday, and they are interested in looking at our project and listing the project for potential SRF funding. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Mayor? Go ahead.
Mr. Spear, do we have a date of completion on East Drummond? We have caught a lot of flak over closing Drummond down just before school started.
Yeah, there's a potential date, tentative date of August 25th, 26th, they're gonna try to work that window, if not that date, then it's 29th and 30th.
So it'll be done by the end of the month?
Yeah, well, the paving, there will still be some striping that'll have to be done, but they do intend on the paving to be done by the end of the month.
It's too bad we couldn't have coordinated this to happen before school started, and I know it's costing the police department, I see police officers out directing traffic and everything, so it's kind of putting a burden on the.
Actually, the traffic's running very smoothly.
But there's still some officers out there, I saw them out there, so.
So on that note, if I can make a, just interject real quick, Lauren and I have had a lot of communication on that issue. That, that whole project was planned, and I think it's important for the public to know, it's planned to be completely finished by the time school started. There was a lot of things they found as they were ripping up the pavement, and, and things that, just a lot of unforeseen events happened during that project that delayed it to, to this point. So I, I want everyone to know that the city staff was doing their job and planning for that to be done by the time school started.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Want me to go ahead?
We're done.
Counsel?
Counsel comments?
Yeah, okay, since I've started, I'll go ahead and finish. I, I wanna congratulate staff on West Drummond, that's looking good. Are we gonna get a curb along there?
There will be a AC Dyke along there.
That's what I thought.
The developer's about to start his, he's got a tentative map that's gonna be proposed before the Planning Commission, and his intent is to move rather quickly for the first phase, which will have curb gutter and sidewalk and a center median along that region of West Drum.
Okay. The striping looks real nice, I figured we were gonna wait for the center median to be paved by a developer, so. The striping looks really nice, anyway, that, that looks like a good finished project, so. That's my comments for tonight.
Sir?
Real quick, I, I think I may have brought this up before, Mr. Spear, Mr. Culp, and Citizen asked me, was, I guess there were some accidents that occurred on Bowman and, I think that's Downs.
Yes, Bowman and Downs, my, my daughter was in one of those accidents.
Okay. And then we're asking the question in reference to a study about maybe possibly putting up a stop sign, sir?
Well, in fact, we, that's part of our most recent HSIP application that was filed Friday.
Okay.
Is for a four-way stopper alternatively, alternatively signalization of that intersection.
Perfect.
And when we apply it, when we apply, it'll be considered, we should know by October either, whether that project's been accepted.
Okay, thank you, so kind.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Lori? I have a few, but first all, to my fellow council members, invitation, and I'm gonna do it here while everybody has their calendar handy, just so you can put it on if you can attend, and if you can't, that's fine. But this new State Director for the BLM is going to be here in town on the 25th, and that's the same day as also our BLM meeting at six, but if you can come out to meet him, it's at 4:30 at the BLM office on Rich Crest. So you've been invited, I've also invited Dennis, Lauren, any department heads that would like to go. And it's just kind of because we work with them and, and we do ongoing projects, and it's just kind of put a face with the name and talk about things that we can do together, 4:30.
Thank you.
Number two is, I will be gone the last week of the month, but not the entire week, to ICSC West Coast with our economic development, 'cause that's something we, as council members, can do that doesn't cost any more money. We're not the best staff in the world, but we try, so we hope fill in where we can, and, and it's good, because it's all the economic development, which is smack dab on the 31st, when I said I was available and that would be a good day. I have to move it a day forward, I think, to the first or back, or I'm just gonna come home early, but I'll get with Gary on that. Can I come? We should be wrapping up that night, right? So I could beat the, oh, good, never mind, I'll be back, 'cause I can wrap up on the I would love for staff to pretty please send me an email on what you view, some of the most important positions that we currently don't have filled, that we need filled, or what would, in an ideal world, if we had money, just so I can. Or what would, in an ideal world, if we had money, just so I can take a look and kind of gauge what you guys see, because you're the ones on the front lines, you're the ones doing all the work, as we just spill it over and dictate to you. And we appreciate all that you do, but if there's something that we're missing, something we can do, a change we can make, whatever you see, I would really like your input. Because this isn't just about what I think, or Mike thinks, it's, it's all of us, because it's all of us working together that makes this city operate the way it does with a skeleton crew, and very efficiently, and keeping things moving. So a big thank you to staff as well for all that you do. And on that note, I'm going to hit the road early in the morning, and I will see you all later.
Okay, Jim?
I got two comments. Appreciate everyone showing up, by the way, this has been a good meeting, uh, we've had some really great input from the, the public. One, um, question for, for our city attorney, um, and this isn't related to the, the Finance Committee, so don't, please don't take it this way, but I'm, I'm thinking of an ad hoc committee. Do we need to agendize the formation of an ad hoc committee, or can we do that? In, in a meeting as we? It's a genuine ad hoc committee with an end date, yeah.
If, if we're doing a, the municipal code requires, we're supposed to do resolutions to form committees.
Okay.
I mean, it, the reason I ask you the question about genuine ad hoc, I mean, it, you know, an off-the-cuff thing, you know, it's, you got two board members together, that's a, that's an ad hoc committee. If you're actually planning the committee in advance and it's going to last for a while, or, or something, then it's probably better just to do it through a resolution, make sure that everyone's on the same page. I got, I got caught, I think, last week by surprise, because I thought that the, the meeting that I'm now hearing was, uh, was not an ad hoc committee meeting. I thought was, based on comments I thought I heard at a prior city council meeting and, and conversation with staff, so. That's telling me we better, I, I think it, it's probably wise to make sure we get some of this down in writing, so that.
Make sure it's formalized.
Yeah.
Problem with the Finance Committee, well, as I understand it, the, you know, a standing committee has to be formed by resolution, and I'm not sure that the Finance Committee ever was, but.
It's subcommittee of the standing.
Okay.
Point being, I think it would be wise to do, to clean this up with a resolution, make sure we're all on the same page, so I don't get caught off-guard again, and.
Okay. Well, let me just tell, tell everyone what I'm thinking, so you can think about it. We've, we've talked a few times about, uh, pursuing some of these funding items, like PILT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, um, and the, the property tax share. Would it be wise to form an ad hoc committee to aggressively pursue, maybe just pick the highest priority there? In my opinion, it's PILT. I think PILT is, is one thing we really have to pursue. Let's form an ad hoc committee to do that. The ad hoc committee can, can schedule meetings with, you know, our Congressman McCarthy, and, and, and really try to focus in on, on working that issue.
He's going to be here in September, isn't he?
Yeah, it'd be a great time to.
It'd be a good time for us to sit down and talk to him about that.
Yeah, and, and rather than one or two of us just kind of coming to him on our own, you know, it carries a little more weight to say, we're designated by the whole city council to address this issue, let's talk about it. So, um, think about it, I, I want to ask to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, a formation of an ad hoc committee to pursue PILT money. So, if we could make that a formal request right now.
Just PILT or?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, just to really focus in on, I don't know, a lot of times we try to shoot at too many things and we miss everything, so. The other thing I wanted to address, um, and this is more of a, a discussion, well, not a discussion, but a comment I want to have with staff, with, with Dennis. One of the frustrations I'm having, uh, with the way things are going is, with the agendas, we, we post the agendas on a Thursday. It's difficult for me to be able to see the agenda, and, um, I want, I say, you know what, we didn't get this item on the agenda. But the thing is, we don't have until Monday for me to actually have that conversation. So, as a result, we can never actually make changes to the agenda once they're posted, and it's very difficult to. Can we, is, is it feasible to make a policy to start posting agendas on Wednesday? Or, or, or have a staff member available to take changes on Friday, I, I don't know.
Most of, most of the time, we actually have our agendas done on Wednesday. We normally do. Our timeframe, though, is, we, uh, we require the departments, whoever's preparing the staff reports, to have the reports in, uh, for the review, uh, well, for my review and the, the city clerk's, uh, compilation. By 5:00 on the second Monday prior to a meeting. So, and so that gives us, just Tuesday and Wednesday, to review those port, reports, and if we have any problems or need to edit, or need to discuss it with department heads. That gives us just two days to read whatever's in the agenda packet and put it together. But, uh, we do typically have them, uh, pretty much ready to go on Wednesday, so I can discuss that with the city clerk. As a matter of fact, even if I had to, maybe I could move the department heads back to Friday, which would mean we're almost two weeks ahead as far as, uh, well, they don't want Fridays to be first.
I don't want it to cause problems either, and that's why I'm.
Well, I'll check, well, I'll, I'll address that in our next, uh, department heads meeting to see what we could possibly work out.
Or, or even if, I don't know, if, if we posted, if Dennis could send all of us a draft.
I think it's possible to circulate a draft.
That's, yeah, I was thinking, everything's due by Monday, right? So if we sent the draft out on Tuesday morning, we'd have time to look at our Monday thing.
Well, Tuesday morning might be a little, uh.
Somewhere in that, Wednesday, any, anywhere in there.
The clerk actually has to compile that, you know, the entire agenda. But we could send a draft agenda out. She sends one to me, matter of fact, that might be the thing, is we'll just, the draft agenda she sends to me for review, uh, we, I could forward and collectively provide comments.
That would be a huge help.
Just, just make sure that the comments are one-way between you and Dennis, and don't constitute a, end up turning into a shadow meeting or something.
Yeah, that's, exactly. And, and my only thought with this is, if we wanted to add a discussion item, just simply a discussion item, doesn't need a report, doesn't need, uh, supporting documents. That would be a good time for us to do that, so that we can have an issue that we all want to talk about, and we can, we can add it then and, and, and talk about it at the next meeting, so. That would be great, thanks Dennis, that's all I have.
I don't have any more, I've made all mine, so, um, then we will adjourn. Thank you all for coming, and thank you staff.